Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 13th council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Under the agenda, I would like to move 15-6 to 13-5. And 15-8 to 15-6. Is there any other additions?
Madam Mayor, Administration has no additions to the agenda.
Okay, could I have someone move it then, please? Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carry. Hi, soccer, wait, soccer. I'd like to welcome Corporal Danny Mills to the front to give the report for the detachment.
Madam Mayor, Council. You guys all have copies, we got this one.
Yes.
I won't be laboring too much. Our call volume was up quite substantially this month with an increase of people in town from the evacuation of Chateauneuf. We had 550 calls for service this month. I don't know what our calls were the month before, but a couple weeks ago I was running stats and we were about 33% up in calls for the month at that point in time. We had 313 prisoners last month. The year before, we were only at 110, so it's a pretty substantial increase. Kind of also have to count that there was COVID going on during that time, so our numbers were down in those years, but we're still on decline. Forty-four total reported assaults occurred. Thirty-five of those were common assaults, one aggravated assault, and then four assault with a weapon that occurred. One reported pointing a firearm, three assaults on police officers. So there's been not just an increase in calls, but there's like an increase of some violence and some pretty significant activity that's been happening in town that our members have been dealing with. Seven reports of sexual assault. Two charges have been laid and five of those investigations still remain open. Significant number of liquor-related incidents. A hundred and nine have been cleared by members using discretion, lodging prisoners in cells and releasing them when they're sober. Kind of the big highlights, I would say, but yeah. Over the last month, we have had a pretty significant increase in call volume and we've had members coming in from other detachments to help us out where we can. And starting tomorrow, there is a group of three members coming up from the special tactical operations, which is like the guys that do searches or other, like where resources need to be. The snow guys are here during the fire thing, if anybody remembers that, the guys that were wearing blue all the time. So there's three of those guys coming up and they're basically one on day shift, two on night shift, kind of give everybody a break and help out when they're here, kind of for the foreseeable future, so. That is kind of where we're at. Anybody has any questions?
Any questions from council?
I have one actually. Just noticing this RCMP newsletter that was attached to the report. Is this app, smartphone app, new? Or is that a...
I don't have, can you, I don't have that.
It's not, I didn't recall.
I don't know how new it is. I know that they're pushing the launch of it. It's basically like a way to report non-urgent matters online to kind of free us up from having to deal with maybe things that are dated and stuff like that. They're trying to push it a little bit more. I couldn't answer as to how.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know we had talked about it, but it...
Counselor Welkey, they actually, I brought that forward. They had talked about that app at our crime prevention conference that I attended in Canmore.
Oh, okay, okay. So is it is launched or not?
It's launched, it's live, yeah.
You can get the app and report crimes.
Yeah, that's why I was curious as to, you know, what kind of like extra traffic that will cause or extra, possibly even non-urgent things that like you can be inundated with a lot of different things, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely could. But at the same time, when somebody calls 911 three days after something happened, I think that's trying to avoid that stuff. We also, we already have, it's called the callback unit. So if somebody calls into our dispatchers and they say, hey, my car got broken into four nights ago and I forgot to call about it, they don't even send it to us. It goes to somebody in K-Dev. They look at it and determine if there's any evidence that was potentially could have been collected, if there's any basically footwork to be done at the call. If there's not, they take all the information documented and the file gets closed there. Never even makes a document.
Oh, sounds good.
I think it's just kind of another route for those files to get captured and kind of document it that way rather than tying up somebody who could be on their own.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All the best to you.
Thank you very much. I'll be back.
When are you leaving?
Uh, two weeks.
Oh.
Two weeks, yeah.
Sad to see you go.
I'm a cannibal.
All right, call upon Brianna Hinson and Jackie Beatman. What did you say?
Call her Chicka-Chick because she was listening. This is her. Okay, don't mind me. I'm getting old. So in the winter of 2019, the town asked us to consider relocating to the lot next door to accommodate the Richardson elevator, the rodeo grounds. Being an agricultural society faced with much-needed agriculture development, we agreed and asked for the land and around $1 million to relocate. After a lot of negotiations, we agreed upon $420,000 that the town would give us, and the town would have the lot cleared and prepped for basically a large parking lot with grass. The Egg Society assumed that meant the infield parking area, which for those of you who are not rodeo-related, that's contestants parking inside the track. Some of these contestants drive $100,000 trucks pulling $100,000 horse trailers, so they do not want to dive across roots and be sinking in holes. After many disagreements of whose responsibility it was to dig up the chip holes, which were very large, refill with clay, pick the roots, and plant grass, the society decided that if we wanted it done before our next and first rodeo at the new grounds in 2021, we were going to have to do it ourselves. We applied for and received a matching grant from CFAP for $19,950 to do the dirt work portion of the project. The total project was $47,023.80. CFAP paid $19,950. The Egg Society paid $27,073.80, of which we would like the town to reimburse us $4,240.20.
So why do you want the town to reimburse you $4,027.00?
Well, it'd be nice if you had to pay for the whole $47,000, but you weren't willing to do anything, so we did it ourselves, and that's the difference between what we had and what CFAP was paying for.
So we would not do it? That was the grass portion of the infield. Any other questions? Yes?
So I guess we negotiated that the project would be $420,000 and then, for whatever reasons, it's not. But was there any discussions initially of overages or shortages?
There was at one point. The issue wasn't over a shortage, the issue is the way the contract was worded. It does not specify that the town is required to do the infield area, just the rest of it, which the Egg Society assumed you were also responsible for the infield area.
So it wasn't clear then from the beginning? Okay.
I think it was left vague on purpose so that everybody could try and get along, but that isn't working. Pretty sure that was Carrie's intention anyways.
Yeah, this has been a bit of a time, I know, but...
It's been a fun two years.
And are you ready to cool this year?
Getting there.
Do you have grass in the infield?
Parts, that's another issue, which I'll probably come to you with later. So the grass isn't growing in the spectators' parking area and we're presuming the soil has too much acid in it from each of her, which we have an agro just coming to the gathering, because I don't know what to do with it. It's been planted twice now, it's not growing.
Yes?
Um, sorry, I just want to make some clarifications. So why $4,200? Is that just the balance, like you guys paid the $33,000?
The $4,200 is basically grass seed, root picking, fertilizer, and the grass cutter.
So you did a lot of this volunteer work yourself?
Yes.
And you hired a lot of people that...
Basically did it.
Worked for... Worked for free, worked for less than free?
Most of the equipment we had, we paid the operators and not for equipment.
Do you have a question?
I do. And I don't know if our administration perhaps could clarify too, but was there, was there some confusion also along the way as to who would do some of the groundwork? Like I think, I thought, and maybe others here could correct me if I'm wrong, that the town at High Level was to provide a lot of the work that may have been hired out. And I don't, and I wanted to just clarify, like some of your expenses, did you hire out some of the work that the town was actually supposed to have done ourselves?
Not other than the infield.
No?
No.
Just the infield?
A lot of our other work was getting the actual arena dirt moved and ready, which wasn't your responsibility.
Okay.
And the fence wasn't our responsibility.
That was part of the $420 that we got, just doing that stuff.
So the contracts pre-vague, but I was there from day one, so I can attest to some of what you're saying is true and what was promised. I shouldn't say promised, but...
Was led to believe.
Was led to believe because we wanted you to move and we wanted you to move quickly. And we wanted the elevator to go there in a certain timeframe.
And we did move and it was hard to get processed because there was six feet of snow on the ground when we needed to sign a contract. We didn't even know what was under the snow.
I remember that, as would Counselor, former Counselor Morgan.
Madam Mayor, just to keep the issue sort of at its simplest level, the agreement was for $420,000. The Egg Society was given $420,000, so anything above that has to come back to council as an ask. And they haven't heard the expenses for us.
Any other questions? Yes?
I can't remember, but the agreement for the state of the grass, what was agreed upon? Was it just to be seeded or was it to be seeded until the grass came back?
Pretty sure it was just to be seeded.
Yeah.
I can't blame you guys for the grass.
Yeah, it's, yeah, the grass is, we have a $5 million fire base that we're on our third seeding and just cannot get it to come back.
Hence why we've got an agro just coming in, maybe there's something we can spray on it, I don't know, to kill the acid.
Other questions from council? If not, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is for High Level resident Leslie Schneider to give a presentation on mosquitoes.
Wasn't even going to give a presentation till I got thinking about it, and then I decided at 6:15 I should prepare something serious. So here's my serious presentation, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you for putting me on the agenda. We moved to High Level eight years ago and we love it here, but there's no place on earth I've found yet that's perfect. Two things I don't like in High Level are the freezing temperatures in the winter and mosquitoes. I'm confident I can't do anything about the weather and neither can you, but I'm betting we can do something about the mosquitoes. In many parts of the world, mosquitoes carry diseases and actually research is going on as close as B.C. I'm not certain if there's any in Canada, but what I've read, the information came from B.C., and it talked about the different diseases that are carried by mosquitoes and how possibly with global warming, those mosquito-borne illnesses are going further north than ever before. So they've seen West Nile virus at higher locations than has ever happened, and they're tracking the patterns of mosquitoes, trying to forecast in 40 or 50 years what kinds of things might travel, on what pathogens might be mosquito-borne that might eventually even reach High Level. So the study of these migration patterns take into things, take into consideration things like yellow fever, dengue fever, the Zika virus, a wide variety of things. We don't have them yet, but perhaps at some point they will be here. There was a funny little story about a researcher in the Arctic. It's not funny, interesting. He did a study and counted how many mosquito bites he actually got on his arm in 10 minutes and extrapolated the data and came to the conclusion that a naked human being standing in that specific place in the environment would be dead in two hours from loss of blood. That's pretty severe and it's not that bad in High Level, although I have been dizzy a few times in the last few weeks, so I'm wondering if that's part of the problem. You guys can laugh if you want, because I know you're a pretty serious council. Anyway, I really didn't come here to talk about the data of other researchers. What I came to talk about is qualitative data from my personal experience in the community in a specific timeframe this year. So like all of you, I'm sure, I know it's a wetter year and we get more mosquitoes when it's wet, but we're finding the mosquitoes to be extremely overwhelming. I was talking to my neighbor on our driveway the other day. We had about a seven-minute conversation and both of us were running around the driveway and going like this. And when I went to go back in my front door, I'm going to estimate there was 150 mosquitoes at my front entrance and I had to go around to the back door. So we have a propane mosquito fancy something, I don't know what you call it, in our backyard. We have a large electric dinotrap in our front yard and we have a small dinotrap in our house. Despite those three miracle machines, my husband and I could still make a tally on how many mosquitoes we kill a day, way more than I'd like to experience. So in the evenings, we aren't sitting on our patio. I'm not even wandering around to look at flowers, which I understand could also attract mosquitoes, so I might have to do away with my yard beautification because I don't want to attract any more mosquitoes to my yard. So we're not going outside. Normally, we live on a street that has lots of people walking, coming and going, lots of kids biking, lots of people going by with baby carriages or strollers, and I'm going to tell you that's down to a very dull roar. There are few people walking by our house when in previous years, this was, you know, kind of after 6:30, 7 o'clock, people were walking up and down, visiting, there was a lot of foot traffic on our streets. I have used the walking trail this year about six times and normally I use the walking trail twice a day, in the morning. I don't know the exact name of the walking trail, but I call it the Deccan Walking Trail because it goes behind Wayne's house. So I walk there in the morning and I would walk there in the evening. I'm not even, when I've walked there this year, I'm not meeting anyone and the mosquitoes are thick. People say, oh, you should put on mosquito repellent or get some citronella plants, or I tell people to tie a strip of bounce to their cap or their shirt collar because I always tied it to my dog collar and it seemed to help. Those are all great suggestions, but like I said, even with three miracle machines and bounce tied to my hat, I've got mosquitoes bouncing off me. This year's mosquitoes seem to be of an extreme variety and I call them kamikaze mosquitoes because they seem to come straight at you at this terrible velocity and then they kind of bounce off you because they've hit you so hard. I don't know if this is a personal body odor that I have or if all of you have experienced these wild little beasts this year also. Apparently they're also female because the males don't bite anything. And I have called my neighbor a few times and said, hmm, I have no male mosquitoes at my house, what do you have at yours? It's hell. So mosquitoes aren't just affecting our home life, they're also affecting our business. Guests at our businesses don't want to roll down their window to give their order because they don't want mosquitoes getting in their car. So they're talking through this tiny crack, we really can't hear what they've said, there's some miscommunication and dissatisfaction, and it's definitely affecting our traffic. People don't want to roll down their window because they don't want them in their car. Plain and simple, the mosquito population in High Level and other wet areas is horrendous this year. We don't have a patio on our business, but I'm sure that any of the businesses in town that have a patio, when I've driven by, have no one sitting on them. I'm only making an assumption that that's at least partially due to mosquitoes. I'm here tonight with a mosquito appeal. They're annoying little insects that have no appeal to anyone I've spoken with. I put up a private online petition because I didn't want to make like this big Facebook post and have 7,000 comments about mosquitoes in whatever direction, and in just a few hours I had 28 signatures, which I could provide to you. But I spoke with Sandra and I found out that an online petition is not an accepted method of providing information to council. I had only done it by sending it by private message, I didn't put it up as a link on any social media because I just wanted to see how people felt. I was just looking for some data. I think I had 28 signatures like in three hours and they were from all quadrants of town and I could have brought all those people here with me tonight, I'm sure they would love to support this, but nobody wants to leave the house, so I didn't even ask them. So based on personal experience, the data that I've collected from residents and my team members, I would like to request that towns, council, look into ways to make our community more habitable by eradicating as many mosquitoes as possible within a radius around our community. I know you guys make lots of important decisions, you discuss the pros and cons of all kinds of things, and I'm not here with definitive answers. I can't tell you, I did present in my pre-package or what's in your package tonight, something of what's being done in other communities, and I know someone said, oh, but Edmonton's not spraying. That doesn't mean they're not doing anything. They still are putting pellets in their water, standing water areas. There are other methods of looking after mosquitoes within certain areas, but I'm not an expert in those and I leave that to people like Clark, who does research on behalf of the town and other interested members, maybe who could form a small task force. I'm not a scientist and I'm not an insect eradication expert, I'm a concerned citizen. So mosquitoes, as you know, are not all bad. They're a food source for other creatures and if they don't get eaten, their biomass falls to the ground and becomes, you know, part of the nutrients that enrich the soil. And these things are great. I am very happy for mosquitoes to be contributing members of the ecosystem as long as they do it two or three kilometers from town. If we preserve this area and create a zone that's less hospitable for mosquitoes, I don't think that's going to affect the something like 17 trillion mosquitoes, I don't know, some astronomical number that they just equated to this amount of biomass. It's, I know they contribute to the ecosystem and that's great, but they don't have to contribute to the ecosystem in every place on the planet. Everyone here has heard the saying, if you think you're too small to make a difference, try sleeping with a mosquito. It's funny, but it's really not. Today, I received a mosquito net in the mail to hang over my bed in a first-world country. I think that's like kind of beyond the pale of where we should be. My mom always said, if you don't ask, for sure, the answer is no. So I'm here tonight asking the town of High Level Council to find out what other communities are doing and help us learn from your research how we can improve what we're doing as citizens and help us find ways to start controlling the mosquito population in the community. I'm sure that we can work together to make the community more habitable, our walking trails more enjoyable, and our lives more comfortable. I am an ecologically sensitive person. I don't use plastic straws. I tried to reuse every plastic bed at least three times. I take ecology very seriously and I know that mosquitoes are part of our ecosystem. But there's a huge boreal forest around us, mosquitoes are welcome to continue to do their important work, but please, let's not have them do it in town. That's my presentation.
Questions for Leslie?
You don't want me to talk anymore, I'm sure.
All right, thank you very much. So you have your minutes before you. Is there any errors, spelling mistakes, or issues? Seeing none, could I please have someone move them? Counselor Dwyer, all in favor? Carry. The RCMP detachment, any more discussion? If not, someone approve or accept for information?
I'll move for information.
Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carry. Egg Society. I would like to make a motion that we paid them the $4,027.00. What's the exact number?
$4,240.20.
Oh, you made it sound like it was like astronomical. Any discussion on my suggestion, my motion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Carry. You're welcome. Put that grass to good use.
I think it grows in the infield.
I'm waiting to see if you're going to kill the mosquitoes now.
So in your package that you have attached there, you see that there are different areas where they are doing mosquito control, although they don't have 500 kilometers of swamp outside the boundaries, but is there any discussion on this? Yes?
I think it's a good idea. I know Rainbow Lake, back in the day, we did a tremendous amount of research. We looked at importing dragonflies, which is what they do in Prince Hopper National Park, or they used to do. And the backdecide or whatever the proper terminology, the little pellets, they really work, but they have to be applied at the right time, in the right area. Can't be, I think it has to be at least 24 hours before a rain, like, but you need to have a permit and you need to be trained. So the average person just can't go out and do this, you have to have a pesticide application license, which stays draining. The other part of the research that we had done, we were told the average mosquito lives its entire life within a 200-meter radius of where it was born. So it's not like if we killed all the mosquitoes in town, that all the mosquitoes in the bush would move in here. Certainly someone's going to get blown in with the wind, get carried in on animals that come through the town, but the one other thing that Rainbow found out after the fact, there's a multitude of different things that you can get. One of them will do mosquitoes and black flies, including in some running water, not just standing water, but, and it also has a shelf life.
So why did Rainbow quit then?
I don't know if Rainbow did quit.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, probably a lucky thing.
Or is it, is it the fact that they don't have a pesticide person?
Oh, it certainly could be. John Butler back in the day apparently had been certified like 30 years ago and agreed to go back and get recertified. The issue lots of times is people don't like to apply this because they think that it has potential health repercussions.
And here it's environmentally friendly.
Oh, absolutely, and that's when we found this particular product, is when John agreed to go back and do it. Once you have the proper training, it's easy to apply. It's a little thing on the back that you mount to the back of a quad and drive out into these places and spray it, but again, the conditions have to be right. It's more effective earlier in the spring when the hatch is going. So whether we have someone who is trained or willing to get trained would be the issue. One of the other reasons that Rainbow may have stopped, the original information that we had on the volume of this stuff and the price that we got, we ended up with like a 10-year supply. 10-year supply that was only good for five years. So there was some costing issues, but no, I think it's a great idea. I can remember growing up in Saskatoon in the 60s and the town would come by another like little cement truck and it was just a 1240, 80s coming out from that. And as kids, we would ride our bikes and, yeah, that probably wasn't my deal.
Well, Gary Peterson used to do it too, and it'd just come rolling in your screens in the middle of the night. You'd go up and down the alleys.
You can still buy like for home use, I think Black Flag has that little machine. You put the cylinder in it.
We've got a conch machine and I was raised with one at my dad's house here in High Level. He had a conch machine in the barn, the house, the store, everywhere. I'm older and not, you know, now I'm kind of like, okay, Dad, you live to 85, but I, I'm wondering about the health effects of doing that. My husband has had a thousand in the past. I don't want to kick him off any earlier than possible. Is that being border call?
Okay, yes.
Sort of to the comments of the, the safety and the environmental concerns and it seems like, yeah, there is a perception maybe that these things are problematic, but, but maybe that's not the case or, you know, we might be thinking of these old, old systems. When you hear spray for mosquitoes, that's all you hear about. And so I, I'm, I'm wondering kind of what the public's perception is or appetite for this. Like is, 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 does anybody else here, are we, I mean, a year like this, for sure, everybody's probably thinking about it. In general, are we a community that's getting like a, like negative feedback about something like this or?
Oh, well, I haven't done it in from Leslie, but.
Negative feedback of doing it though.
Oh, well, Grant or Edmonton was not going to spray this year, but after a few days or a few weeks of the mosquitoes, they are now spraying. So I guess people forget their ecological ideas when they're.
Right. And, and perhaps it might be too late this year, I don't know.
But I mean, with the education system, you can, you can put out saying that it's.
Well, in our, our excellent communications department, maybe it's a, you know, for the rest of the season, we could set up a plan for next year.
Maybe there's still something that could be done this year though, Jen.
Perhaps.
We're not even halfway through June.
Right. And that, and that like you alluded to that a little bit.
Okay, we're not supposed to be talking back and forth to the audience, number one. So if you have a question, please go through me.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Yes.
So two others, well, just to circle back on the training, I don't think the training is like a 15-minute online course where you sign up. Like you have to go away, you have to be sure this is an involved process. The other thing, these things can be aeroly applied, so from a helicopter, because in our area, so Rainbow Lake, they could go around, there's no bigger bodies of water. This year, some of the town, like there's what, 10 quarters of land that are a lake and you can't do that from a quad, you'd have to do that from a helicopter. Not all of that's town land. We would have to get permission from the province or any crown land or from the county for any county.
So can we leave this to administration? Can we make a resolution if you want to proceed this way, somebody?
Sure, I'll move that council direct administration to investigate mosquito control opportunities and whether or not it's something that can be facilitated in this budget year.
Within which timeline?
Well, the first hard frost is going to get rid of most of the problems. I agree that if we're going to.
But we need a timeline because, I mean, if we're going to wait till fall to do it, how do I?
We have committed the whole next week.
I don't think they'll have enough time to be certified by them.
Yeah, we, we can probably come up with some preliminary options by next week.
Okay.
Not saying that that's going to happen, but the training is the big thing. Although there may be contractors that could do it this year.
They have to be municipal contractors though.
No, they can be a commercial contract. There's lots of commercial companies that.
Can they? Can they in addition?
So in order for the municipality to do the application herself, we have to take a herbicide applicator's course, which includes pesticide for biting flies. You're looking at 80 hours minimum classroom time or study time to achieve that certificate. Once that certificate is approved and you're certified, then the municipality has to become a certified municipality and that includes storage and some regulations we have to follow. And if we use a larvicide versus a pesticide, like a fogging system, so I've been here forever, we used to use the fogging system years ago, so you know, I'm familiar with it. That now is even restricted more to within 90 meters of a property, so those options aren't there. The other, there is a possibility that we can contract it out and it would have to come out of, I think the nearest one I remember was Maliki that does it, but there are contractors to do it and what that would look like and cost, we could investigate that for you.
Gary Smith doesn't do it?
It's very specific.
Okay. Did you have a question? Okay, so you have a motion. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? we will be expecting something next week. All right, so I did send my report to you, but hey, stay for the rest of the meeting.
They got what they want.
Well, you can't, sorry.
Question heard.
Yeah. Okay, I sent my report to you. I don't know how many of you got it, but I just wanted to let the public know that AHS has issued a request for expression of interest and qualifications for home care. They're taking action to ensure that there is sustainable home care across Alberta and they're seeking new areas and one of these is to have private supportive living providers. So that could be like me becoming a provider and taking in one or two people that need home care or me looking after some elderly people in their home. These are the types of things that AHS is looking for. They're looking for people to send them interest and care will not change and home care will remain publicly funded, but it allows clients to remain in their own homes without having to go to lodges or other places. It also helps keep facility-based care accessible to those who require it. This is a six-month progress, process that they're accepting these, but, and the home care will continue as is till this comes out. Renovations to Mackenzie House, there's two-phase renovations. One is the landscaping, so that will change because it's not draining properly. It's, the trees are dying, the grass is not growing. All of that is part of what is happening to Mackenzie House. The other phase is, is the actual construction of the two floors in Mackenzie House. It's tendering in July. I thought it was supposed to be June, but obviously it's gone backwards. And August is the date that it will start and it should be, should be, don't hold my feet to the fire, but November, by the time we start accepting clients, because we have to get people in, in there as well. Something that's going to really affect people, especially in Fort Famillion with the, the SRHI housing is it used to have a threshold with minimum income and then you had to pay 20% of your income towards your rent to own. It is now rising up to 30%. So that comes into effect for everybody that buys into this program going forward. And there you can see the prices that it will. Went to Tri Council, that was interesting. I'm very impressed with the fact that they can build a $5.8 million arena with only 8.3% of what it would have cost us to build an arena. Their rink is very nice and I wish that maybe we had that type of community support because most of everybody donated their work to that facility. We also at Tri Council reiterated that we needed to be given presentations by various groups in the region like victim services, boreal housing, policing, et cetera, et cetera, to make our coming together have meaning. And we also discussed ways to move Rainbow Lake and Chateaix forward with having another way out. And so we will look at that for the next agenda. I think Mackenzie County was coming up with some, or some road plans and things for us to look at. And then, did you go to NAM?
No.
No? Well, you didn't go, but were you online?
No, for some reason my town emails still aren't forwarding to my work email, so I didn't get the notice.
Oh, I guess I could have called you.
It's okay.
Anyways, it wasn't that interesting. But the one thing to come out of it is this resolution from, from, and that's the one there, the resolution that Graham Perry is putting forward this, this weekend on energy and gas. So the resolution is to advocate for the province to eliminate the disparity in electricity pricing for transmission and distribution across the province by adopting a model similar to British Columbia and Saskatchewan. So that will go forward for communities to vote on that thing. Are you going to that? 16 tomorrow, or day after? 16th is Thursday.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Oh, it's AU May Summer Conference. Well, you don't have to specifically go this week, you can go virtually on any.
The virtual one is the 16th.
Oh, is, I thought you could go virtually, you could pick any place.
Nope, I think it's just the one, if I remember when I read the site, it's just the one, that's the Thursday.
Are you, are you interested?
Depending on what time it is on the 16th or something.
Well, it's all day. But, but could you check and see? Because it seemed like I, I thought that, do you remember? Oh, you weren't there. Okay, so that's sort of my report. If there's any questions, you can ask me. Yes?
The Tri Council meeting, Madam Mayor, was regarding the presentation, so were they going to discuss about the next or?
Oh, no, no, no. We were, we discussed sending out an invitation to these groups to give a presentation back to, back to the, the councils.
Because yeah, before we took our break, that extended break there, the High Level Community Policing Society was prepared to do the presentation, so.
Are you prepared at this point? Because we could put your name or your group forward.
Yeah, it'd be good.
When is it, September?
September 17th.
So yeah, child advocacy part portion would be, would be a huge presentation and where we come in the last two years.
Thank you. Yes.
Perhaps there's someone else on council who'd go to the summer conference on Thursday or virtually at least.
I don't think, can they register now?
We can check.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if you can, we'll send it out.
Is anybody interested?
I can't.
No?
I'll be on the road.
You're listening to your headset. You're listening to your headset.
Yeah, I don't think that'll work. I think my wife will be very upset if I have your phone on.
Okay, so could somebody move my report, please?
I'll make it.
Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carried. Deputy Mayor?
On May 25th, attended the Canadian Regional Management Committee meeting, meeting. May 26th, the EOEP Land Use and Development Session Number Three and on June 2nd, the Session Number Four, of course.
How many sessions are there?
Four.
Oh. So you're done?
Yes.
Did you pass?
There's no pass fail.
No.
It's a ten minute space. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
May 26th, I attended the Transportation Society meeting. May 28th, the PLS meeting. June 1st, Golden Range Society.
What's PLS?
Peace Library Assistant.
Well, I don't think the public would know that.
All right. Well, it's Peace Library Assistant meeting. June 1st, Golden Range Society. June 8th, I also attended Tri Council. And June 9th, the Bursary Committee was done by evening. That's what I have.
And the two winners of the bursary from the town of High Level?
Heather.
Whitford.
Whitford and Brian.
Ty Moore.
Ty Moore, yes.
Yeah, it's Ty. Yeah, it's Ty.
Congratulations to those two individuals. Any questions for Counselor Anderson? Okay, thank you. Counselor Dwyer?
On May 25th, I attended the Mackenzie Weeks Management Commission meeting and on June 7th, I attended the Banner of Remembrance meeting.
And Banner of Remembrance?
So we had to have a look at our terms of reference. So this is kind of the first meeting we had since we've moved from a task force to a committee. So there's some amendments that have to be done to our terms of reference to reflect that. We also discussed reigniting the unveiling, like celebration of the unveiling, kind of resuming that post-COVID. In addition, we're hoping to collaborate with the Fort Famillion Legion as they are also doing a banner of remembrance program as well for their local veterans. So we're hoping to establish communication with them in hopes that we can possibly work together.
Have they put that forth?
The Fort Famillion Legion? They've already made banners, essentially taking our banners for, of the Fort Famillion veterans and, and making them.
What do you mean taking banners of?
So the, the cop, the layout of our banner for our Fort Famillion veterans is essentially completely copied for the Fort Famillion Legion, whether they went to the same printer, printed duplicates. They're not on display in the community. The last remembrance ceremony, they were in the legion itself, so. Hopefully we can collaborate so that, you know, two groups aren't kind of doing the same thing. We can kind of work together.
Like, could I ask who gave them permission to copy them? We don't even know.
Kind of just happened.
Nobody knows.
Nothing we know. They just kind of appeared, whether they, like I said, whether they went to the printer that we use and said, make a duplicate. But they're exact replicas of, of the layout of ours. So essentially the task force did the late work and, and I, again, I don't want to, to say anything negative towards the Fort Famillion Legion. I mean, they support their veterans as well, and very well, but I'm just hoping that we can potentially collaborate with them. I mean, they have a ton of veterans in that area, whether or not we can do some further collaboration with them.
Yes.
I was in Peace River. Are you referring to that they copied the same style of our banners or something?
Well, the veterans, the families, there's families from Fort Famillion that paid to have banners made for here. And they copied, replicated those exactly, the pictures and everything, which, I mean, I don't have a problem with, but it would be nice if they would go through us since we started the program.
Well, when I, when I was in Peace River last fall, they had the same thing.
Yes. But I'm saying the exact, like I. But I'm saying the exact, like I have an uncle, for example, who was a veteran from Fort Familling. His family paid for his banner to come, go up in high level. And they took that and replicated it wherever they go. I guess they probably went to the same printer and used our. So that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, there's, there's towns all over the place that do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't an original idea by any means.
No. It came from Nova Scotia.
Fair time.
Madam Mayor, the, I think the, the task force initially was a bit of a regional deal.
It was?
Yeah.
As it was. So, and was there not some sort of affiliation with the Legion out there? Because their Legion was active?
No. No, so.
Or some excess funds went to them or something?
Well, no, all, so all the poppy funds. So like, when I go around with the poppy boxes every year, so all that money goes to the Fort Familling Legion because they're the local branch. So their mandate, because two seven, two disbanded, it now encompasses high level as well, so to take care of their veterans. So hence why the poppy money goes to the Fort Familling Legion.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Jessman?
On June the 8th, I attended our annual, A, Annual General Meeting for the High Level Community Policing Society. And that is it for me.
And who's the president? Who's the chair? Congratulations.
Thank you.
On chairing a worthwhile organization.
It is very worthwhile, yes. The ATM went well, it was well presented. We do have a list of people who are interested in being partaking, so we're going to be contacted here shortly to increase the participation on the, the group.
Okay, good. Counselor Lambert?
On June 8th, I attended the Tri Council meeting with most members of council. As discussed, we looked at different routes of evacuation for Ringo and Chateauneuf, and Anyway, then also on June 9th, or June 10th, we, as Counselor Anderson mentioned, we had the anniversary meeting via email. And yeah, congratulations to the two recipients of it.
Thank you for presenting those.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Welke?
On June 7th, I attended an FASD Society meeting. It was a bit of an emergency meeting called via Zoom. We're a little bit sorry to announce temporary closure of the housing wing of the FASD Society, just due to staffing concerns. So there is currently two residents, and we are looking to help facilitate, you know, what will happen with the closure of the, the housing wing. But we just discussed a variety of, of, you know, issues and the difficulty in obtaining staff for that type of work. It's pretty much a 24-hour job, so that you need day staff, you need night staff, and, you know, and a certain, certain level of training for, you know, supervising in that area. So it's not closed permanently, it's just a, it's a temporary thing for now until we can rework the program and decide how it can move forward.
That's, um.
Mm-hmm. All the other programming and everything will continue as, as per usual. It's just the, the permanent housing side of it is too, too difficult to, to, to run at the moment. June 8th, I also attended Tri Council in La Crete. It was a great meeting. I remember when I first got on council, we had one, and that was the last one, and now we had, had got, got the regional team back together. So I think it was a great voice, especially to hear from the smaller municipality of Rainbow Lake. You know, a lot of, you know, their, their issues that do affect everyone here, and McKenzie and us, and, you know, we're, we're well heard. So it was a pretty, pretty engaging conversation on evacuation routes. And I'm interested in, you know, seeing where that leads in terms of increasing the access and maintaining it is the big thing for, for those communities out west. Nobody else mentioned the pickleball courts in their outdoor arena. We talked about what a great way to utilize that space in the summer. So in their community, they have pickleball courts painted, the lines painted in their outdoor, outdoor arena space. And I've heard that it's, it is popular here. There's some competition over using the tennis courts. So we do have our outdoor arena, it'd be something we could look at. It's just painting a few lines and putting up a couple nets. There, it's all horrible stuff. So, so I.
I think we had that discussion.
Here?
Yeah.
In council?
I don't know if it's had it in council. I had it with Ruth.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, it was a nice idea. It was, it was just a, a nice use of their, their space. They also, I have put some, some tennis courts into their outdoor arena space. Well, but our tennis courts are fabulous here, but generally, that, that's what they're for. So they don't have the lines anyways for the other types of games, so, or sports. So it's just a, just a, like a nice idea.
Yeah, well, and the high school has the pickleball nets as well.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Be nice to see them.
Mm-hmm. And lastly, I just wanted to give an update on Guitar Lessons the Movie. We're still waiting on any type of plan for a release in this area. Aaron Sorensen and some crew were down in Banff this past weekend at a Canadian Film Industry Summit, which had a large Indigenous film promotion component. It wasn't a viewing of films or anything, it was more of a networking event to get films picked up. So they met with CBC, APN, Netflix, as well as other promoters from the big film festivals. One of the biggest reasons why it can't be released at this time is a lot of the bigger festivals require, if you get in, require that it be the first initial release of the film. So they want to be very careful that they don't go and release it in a bunch of communities up north and then disqualify themselves from some of the bigger festivals. So, so it's still a, still a bit of a work in progress, but it's, yeah, it's definitely done and ready to go. It's purely being marketed right now.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. One more thing. My understanding now that our television and film task force is official, so at this point, we can probably start to put together meetings, correct?
I, I have an update on that.
Okay, okay. That's all I have to report.
All right. Any questions for Counselor Welke? Thank you. Could I have someone move the council committee reports?
Did you have a question? Yeah, regards to the Guitar Lessons movie. So you said it's purely marketed right now. Do they have, it's on the trailer that they're going to release or anything along with that?
There are trailers. I don't know to what extent it, I don't think there's been any release of any media to the public at this point. I can find it.
I don't think they can to lose a distributor.
Yeah, it might be, without the ability to follow up with some of the film, I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly how that works in terms of timing.
Teaser. Teaser series in advance.
Yeah, yeah.
Like the Ford Bronco?
People still wait.
Ouch. Did someone move this?
No, I had a question, but I'll move it. Thank you.
Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carry. Okay. Council's action list?
Madam Mayor, we just did have a note, just further to Counselor Welke's comment. We have reached out to the three individuals that were appointed by council, and one has declined. They are relocating from the community and will no longer be eligible, or voting to be here to stay apart. So we're just wondering if council wants us to reopen that or just proceed with the task force assets? Or do both?
I, I'll redo both.
Yes?
For now, maybe just appoint an extra counselor and proceed the intake. The last time didn't seem to be overwhelming. And perhaps in the fall, when we're advertising for other things, we can rework that.
When we go up for the new members before organizational meeting, that would do it then.
All right. Yes?
Updates on, this is the, updates on the RSSA and, and annexation?
Are you talking to me?
Could, could I have an update, please?
Oh, yes, you may.
Thank you.
I couldn't understand what you meant.
So Madam Mayor, there's, the four agreements have been scoured quite thoroughly by both administrations. There was a couple of small errors and cross-referencing issues, and we had to fix a map on one of the, one of them, but they are substantially complete. I've just got to read the franchise agreement again, which I plan to do tomorrow. And they are also sitting with the administration of the county. And my last conversation with them is that they have no concerns with the last set of fixes. So I hope to have those ready and presentable to council and to community as a whole.
We have to look at them again?
I just, I just thought you should have that opportunity.
I thought we were going to sign them.
So according to McKenzie County's administration, they'd like to aim for June the 23rd because you were in La Crete that day. Boreau Housing is attending the county council meeting.
Oh, well, I'm not going to be there.
Oh, okay. We'll find it other day.
Well, that's 23rd.
Thanks. Thursday.
Yeah, I don't think I'm here.
Okay. All right, we'll find a date.
Just to follow up with that, in the spirit of cooperation, have we received the 21 payment in full yet?
No. We received what they had put in their budget, not what, not the entire amount under the ground.
So in, um, they're not going to give us? You said it's in their budget.
This is all backdated to January the 1st, 2021.
But you said what was in their budget?
So they had budgeted.
They budgeted the $547,000. That was the 20% of the original RSSA. So once the RSSA was, the new agreement was signed, they're going to release the funds that sum up to the $1 million, and then the extra $1 million for 2022, once it's signed.
Okay. So just so everybody's aware, there is a new chief for the Deneva. Congratulations to Wilfred Hu Canusa, who is the new chief, elect, I guess. And there are counselors now there at the, I think the 22nd may be the day that they vote on council.
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions for the council action list?
Homehood for information.
Deputy Mayor, moves for information, all in favor? Carry. I just had a question on the upcoming events. Do we have Indigenous days on here? Really? Because I couldn't see it.
It says under the region. Madam Mayor, one of the things we did just for ease of references, we amalgamated the two lists into one list. So it shows both the high-level events and, and the regional events.
June 21st.
So it's just near the bottom of the June.
Oh, okay.
So the 21st and Jubilee Park.
Okay, so unfortunately, I would only miss it if it was a dire. And I am going to be out of town that day because I am taking my grandson to his doctor's appointment in Edmonton. So I won't be there.
I think they've got quite a bit already planned and set up. There's going to be some craft sales and bunch of other shops. So we'll get you a more detailed list. That's the date, as things get finalized.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions about the events? Could I have someone move to accept it then, please? Counselor Dwyer, all in favor? Carry. The monthly report to council?
Madam Mayor, I think just for ease for council and staff, if council wanted to direct any questions directly to the directors.
Director Straub, have street sweeping operations started again? And are, is our pothole and crack seal machines working great?
Thank you for that question inquiry, Mr. Langford. So yes, our, we've had, we've had some staffing issues lately. We have new staff offer medical issues, and now one offer holidays. That's been a bit of a challenge for us. The last couple of weeks, we've been working on a water day, which was a major issue for us. Our street sweeper went out today, this morning. We received our new crack sealer. Spent the morning with them, orientating staff on it. Our product is in for it. So assuming the good health and fulfillment of our staff, after the street sweeping processes got caught up, currently I have three staff members, so we're kind of keeping things together this week. Once they're caught up, we'll be full into crack sealing and pothole patching while in the street sweep. Thank you.
I, just to add to that, is there, is there a plan, Director Straub, regarding the, the patch or the crack sealer? Like, or are you just going to go take it as much as you can? Or do you figure, or what is the overall plan? I guess what I'm asking.
Well, thank you, Counselor Jessman. So our plan right now is, we're doing it in stages. First stage is to sweep our streets and get a bunch of the debris off it. It's pretty hard to do any repairs with a bunch of dirt. The street sweeper's out right now. And as soon as we get another staff number back, we'll have both out catching up and getting them as clean as possible. Once that's completed, we'll go over the streets, starting at 98th Street and working our way west. They are the older streets, and they are more damaged than the newer sections downtown. We'll follow through with pothole patching first, and then we will follow up with crack seal sealing after. And we are going to go until we run out of, of budgeted materials. The, the hope is to get over at least 80% of the community, especially the older parts. The downtown section itself is going to require some special stuff. Mid to end July, we're looking at shutting down the one lane and seeing if we can do major repair on it to carry over for the next couple of years until the bigger process.
Can you, like me, I can't recall the, the cost of that product? What did we budget for this year?
So the, there's, so there's two processes, really, when we look at street repairs. The first process the municipality does, it's called maintenance. And the intent is to bring the road or keep the road at its original condition. And that's pretty common within most municipalities. And that condition and maintenance includes crack sealing to start with. And we've used a liquid coal water-based product over the years. We found it very unsuccessful, even though it's easy to apply and considerably cheaper. It, it didn't do its job of sealing the crack. The crack then develops and gets water within it and freezes, and the temperature changes and other things, and creates a pothole. So that pothole or breakout of the asphalt then has to be filled with material that may have a spray patch before that. The cost of the spray patching is relatively inexpensive. I think between materials and the oils this year will be about $12,000. The current amount we've allocated just to the crack seal material is about $60,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could just follow up. As we do the streets, we'll, we'll advertise several days in advance, so the people know we're, we're working with them.
Do we now have our bylaw people here?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council, we had seasonal bylaw terms started today for the next four months. So he'll be in training for the next week or two. Our one CPO is on vacation for the next couple of weeks, but we have Mark Rushden returning tomorrow for a couple of weeks to do training with seasonal bylaw enforcement officer as well.
Could you send them down my way and get the dandelions under control?
It's what law enforcement.
Yeah, I know. That's my point.
Well, to add, I'd like to make a comment to your dandelion question. I mean, I mean, right now, it's the moisture that goes along with the mosquitoes. Uh, the excess moisture is causing the extra dandelion problem this year, so.
But if people mowed their lawn, we wouldn't have that big of a problem.
Madam Mayor, my wife has been mowing twice now the last week, and hers looks like royal crap. We cannot stay ahead of the weeds. We sprayed it the other day, we got to spray it again. It's just wild. Your lawn was looking really nice, and now it's full of dandelions in less than a week. It's just the excess.
Okay, let's back down. Grass is high, though. Your wife may be mowing her grass, other people aren't.
Yeah, I did notice that a lot is coming in. Lock down what you're wearing.
Uh, yeah. Have you been mowing? No. There's lots on my street. Anyways, I don't have any dandelions because I go pick them up. That was my question is who is the new mayor and when is he going to be on the bylaws?
He's starting today.
And Mark will be here tomorrow?
So he'll be doing some training. He did orientation today, uh, so I, I expect it will be a couple of days yet until he's out, um, on patrol. But yeah, we just got to, uh, get a few more things in line, so, but we will be on it.
Thank you. Uh, another question is, when are we doing this whole audio visual stuff in here?
Madam Mayor, we'll have something presented to council, that's my bad.
Okay.
For your discussion.
I have, oh, I have, yes. I have another question. Who's pointing what?
Okay, your question, go ahead.
What?
I just wanted to elaborate on the water break we had, if, when you wish.
Okay. I just have a question for this, uh, vaccine for hepatitis. Under Health and Safety, the current audit plan, work is being done on a vaccine plan for hepatitis at the request of several facilities.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, that's just an update for any of the staff who want the hepatitis vaccine or whose hepatitis vaccine is nearing its, uh, stamp.
So we're not forcing people to get...
We have no policy to do so. It's similar to the flu shot in the fall. We actually bring healthcare workers on site to administer the flu shot. It's just easier for all staff to have it down here.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, I could answer the hepatitis thing. So that was brought on by, uh, specifically some of our guys working within the wastewater sector. Uh, it's, uh, very high risk. And, uh, we always were looking for us to tell them to provide that vaccination for us. So it wasn't at the cost of the employee. Uh, they want to protect themselves. Uh, what I did want to mention, and nobody asked the question, but if you notice, so we had the water outage on May 19th. It was a significant event, especially for those people in the morning that got out and had no water. Some of us were up early and had our shower early before we ran out the door. Uh, just a note on how much water we lost, um, during that one and a half hours that we were trying to get the town shut in on that portion of the road. We lost about 2.2 million liters of water. So that's a monthly water bill for 220 homes. It was a very significant amount of water. Uh, we were able to isolate it down to one intersection, and that's the intersection of 96 and Highway 35, which has been closed for a few weeks now. Uh, we were under the understanding, uh, with our current drawings and our information, we had that it was 16-inch pipe, uh, 400-millimeter and 14-inch pipes within the area. So we have, that's a major connector for our distribution system. Uh, two 16-inch wells, a 14-inch well and an 8-inch well. We were able to isolate it and only lost water at the end to, and through routing, we're able to only lose water supply to one property. And that property was supplied to tanker trucks. So if you seen that truck parked in front of it, uh, we had supplied a tanker and a pump there so they could maintain water during the outage. Uh, after, uh, a significant wave for locates, we had to locate there. Also a lot of telecommunications, gas and major buried power in that area. Uh, once they were all located, we began excavating on the dig. Uh, in the end, the dig was approximately 50 feet long, 20 feet wide, 16 feet deep. That's already where the mains are buried there. Uh, about 14 feet down, we found another telecommunications cable laying right on top of our main, unbeknownst to most people. So we had a few days to lay there, try to figure out if it was fiber optic or abandoned or otherwise. Uh, I can safely say it's now been cut off, so it was abandoned, but nobody seemed to know that. Uh, that job, uh, required special shoring. We trucked in from the city. Uh, it was a straight cut, 16 feet down, and we had to take the extra time to protect our workers and make sure they were safe. So when we were into that dig, because it is a major intersection, uh, we opted to service the valves that are there. There's the, the four major valves. Most of that, uh, materials are 40 years old. So we opted to service the valves and service the control boxes on. Uh, two of the boxes, we have a six-way waiting period for parts. Uh, we manufactured some to, uh, suit to process our self-inerals. So it is now complete. Uh, we expect that to be settling for the next few weeks. If there's an opportunity to, uh, put a regular pavement over before winter, we will look at that. But that project is now completed and we hopefully, uh, we don't have to go into it in our next lifetime, so.
Good.
And a side note, uh, so far, our costs are upwards of $30,000, unexpected expenditure for that one repair.
Yes.
Where did all the water go?
Good deal.
If it wasn't just undergrounded. And hopefully it worked. It had worked out really well for us, and that was part of it. It was hard to see initially, uh, until we got over that side of town. The water break came out four feet straight over, went into a culvert and flowed down a ditch and headed north. So it's not like it shot out through the middle of the street. But it was a sizable flow. Uh, like I said, the valves are old. Uh, we were able to close them down. And we got it slowed down so it was still flowing about 1,000 liters a minute. And we thought that was acceptable at that point until we got the next valve shut in. So they are very large valves. A lot of work. It was, it took material. So we, we weren't sleeping on the shovels. We were trying to work through a major problem.
Okay. Um, I have a question for Director Rolfe. The grant application for the Toco variants, we have to redo that?
Yes, they requested, um, a formal grant application. So they had sent a letter of approval, um, from the minister to yourself saying that the grant was approved to the 2.646 million for the multipurpose facility. Um, but the administration, um, for the upper environment said that they wanted an actual application completed. So, um, we have now completed that and forwarded. Haven't heard anything since.
I guess I shouldn't have been saying anything about it. Any other questions from administration? What?
Oh, nothing. It's just in this day and age of rent pay reduction, we were approved, received the funding and then had to do an application. And we've heard nothing back since that was submitted, which was unreasonable, unreasonable.
I thought the minister's word was...
So did we.
All right, could I have someone accept, move to accept the monthly report? Councilor Lambert, all in favor? Here it is. RFD for property tax recovery.
Madam Mayor, Director Phillips will address that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this was a tabled item, um, that council set their reserve bids for the properties for the property tax recovery public auction in 2022. Um, we have set the date for August 12th, which meets the guidelines for the Alberta Gazette, um, issue for June 30th. Um, the discussion prior to, um, setting the bids and the conditions was, um, looking at, um, different, um, I don't know where it, different ways in the MGA that we could, um, set additional sale conditions. And additional sale conditions could be set any sale conditions. So, um, sifting through a lot of the, um, unsightly properties and any of the properties that we currently have in the auction, um, there is a, um, section in the MGA 546. Um, you can do an order to remedy dangers in unsightly properties. Um, a designated officer, and designated officer will issue an order in compliance with the MGA. So, um, it does state under the legislation and policy in the RFD, um, the different, um, types of remedy dangers and unsightly properties that we could look at. So this would encompass any property that we have in the auction to issue an order. Um, and regardless of the auction as well, this could be a condition of the sale, but we can also just go ahead as a municipal, um, do a municipal order as a designated officer to any of the properties that are listed. Um, just an update that the property in question is almost paid up with the arrears. So, um, we do have, all property owners have until August 12th, have been notified that they have until 2 o'clock to either enter into an agreement or to pay the arrears in full. And two of the properties are almost at that point to have their arrears paid in full.
So is property 0351?
Um, no, that is not.
So that property owner does not even have the option of payments?
Um, they have the option to, um...
I thought they did.
No, not this one. Uh, property owner for, um, tax row 351, they were already entered into a tax arrears agreement. And so the tax recovery process states that if you breach your contract, you miss payments, you automatically go into the public auction, um, for the, for the next year. So they do not have, um, the ability to enter into an agreement. They just have the ability to pay those arrears as of August 12th. So... The other three owners do have the ability, um, to go into a tax agreement. And two of the properties are almost paid off with the arrears, so.
Any questions? Yes.
So one, the only question, despite the fact that they're almost up to date, um, can we investigate whether we're going to issue an order?
So, um...
That's in the motion.
Actually, um, Madam Mayor, yeah, we would proceed under separately from the tax sale, um, with, with an order to remedy that property, uh, which is probably the cleaner way to do it, than try to tie it into the tax sale. We'll work with landowner first and then we'll get along.
Yeah, I'm looking, um, looking into the title. Um, when we are required to send out, um, notification to all interested parties as well on the title, um, there is a order on that property, um, with, um, HS. The only thing is, is that there's no, um, recommendation to remove any improvements. It's only to make the improvements to meet standards. So the order under section 546, um, even with consultation with, with, um, Shore Starting and with, um, Gwendolyn stated that this would be the best process for us to follow, um, with the condition of the sale and also outside of the conditions of the sale.
Any other questions? Could I have someone make a motion?
I'll move the recommendation.
Okay. Deputy Mayor moves. All in favor? Here it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Um, can we take a five-minute break, please?
12:00?
Yep. We are taking a break. Okay. Welcome back, everybody. Under new business?
Madam Mayor, the administration is recommending that the council reappoint Jerry Chomac to the assessment review board. We do have a letter from Mr. Chomac accepting the reappointment.
Somebody want to make that motion?
Yes, I will.
Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carry. AUMH?
There's a couple of items here related to the Alberta Municipalities Convention and Trade Show. They're fall one in September. The dates are September 21st to 23rd in Calgary. And administration is just wondering which counselors would be available to attend, and we'll start making a rulebook.
I'm going, and I have, you don't have to book me a room. I already booked it.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Interested. I would also be interested, go ahead.
No? One and done?
No, we go up.
Interested, but not sure if it's.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Just.
Nope, I've got.
Thank you.
Four.
Yeah, I've got four and a maybe.
And the fourth one?
Okay.
Anderson Lambert, myself, Langford, and possibly Welke.
But no room required for the mayor.
So I can book three rooms for, I can email.
All right, Madam Mayor. Further to that is item 13.3, and that's a request for a meeting with Minister of Alberta Municipal Affairs.
What motion to?
Yes, let's get a motion to send all counselors that are interested.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor? Carry. Okay, invitation 13.3.
Madam Mayor, it's an invitation to meet with Minister of Municipal Affairs at the Alberta Municipalities Convention and Trade Show in September. The council was not able to meet with Minister MacGyver last year at the conference. So if council is interested, we will submit. But they are also requesting for any topics the council would like to discuss with the minister.
Stip funding water line at the airport?
No.
Evacuation center?
30% consideration we asked for for rural remote communities. Consideration to conduct municipal census. All the things that we never heard back about after our August meeting.
Can we go back to review the letters?
Opportunity costs for the trucking.
Could I have a motion to meet with Minister MacGyver regarding issues?
I'll make that.
Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carry.
Madam Mayor, the last item, next item, item 13.4 is just a request from the, from Alberta Municipal Affairs to participate in a survey on the code of conduct. That survey, that is due by June 14th. You can also wish to assign somebody to participate in that.
To participate in it?
But it provides very good. Yeah. That is tomorrow.
But that's just going to that site and putting in your feedback?
Yeah. There was, there are some, there was a bit of a background there on.
I'm not interested. I think our code of conduct's pretty fair.
I don't believe this council's ever had a problem with its code of conduct.
But if you want to go to that website, just go right ahead and put your input in. I think this is more or less for the bigger, meaner, leaner municipalities.
Oh, will we accept that as information?
All in favor? Carry. Okay, so I would like to discuss 13, or 15.6, but it's now 13.5. This letter was to us, and it was from the shadow population about issues that are important to us. And they asked for us to attend their forum, and I would like to attend that. I think it's virtual. I don't know. They didn't leave a. So could I have an administration email?
Yep.
And let them know that I wish to attend? Anybody else want to attend that forum?
What day is it?
It, it doesn't, they don't say.
No. I think they're just trying to set it up at this time.
You would like to? Yeah. Three important issues that are impacting our community because the federal government doesn't, or they disproportionately fund under $20,000. So I'd really like to discuss broadband with one of our items anyways, and lack of federal support on grants that we apply to. Anybody else?
Oh, it depends on the date and time.
Okay, so just, I guess the motion could be to send an expression of interest by the council of high level. Somebody want to make that motion? Counselor Welke, all in favor? Carry. And the other one is the Alberta Health Services. I would, I would like to send a letter to Alberta Health Services and say that even though we have 2.4 mental health therapists, I don't feel that that's enough and that we're still four short. And one addictions counselor for our area. Like, I mean, this is the same letter we sent before, but if we don't keep the squeaky wheel squeaking. Like, I don't like the fact that they think providing virtual support is a great idea because I think that's just as bad as no support at all. What is the rest, Counsel? Thank you.
Sorry, more of a statement. No, I completely agree. We don't have near, near enough. And I, just looking at the letter that they sent, and part of it was, for your convenience, is a list of services that continue to be available. They mentioned 24/7 emergency services about Northwest Hall Center Inn, 4 for million. However, when patients arrive there, they're deferred to mental health and addiction. So that is not offloading anything from that service. In fact, that's creating an increased demand for that service.
I, I just feel that, you know, having the second highest or highest mental health and addictions in the province, and they can't recruit people for our area, then they need to start doing something different, like maybe paying them more.
Sorry, remember the thing, Madam Mayor? I remember when M.L.A. Williams was here, he had mentioned about trying to organize a meeting with the minister for mental health. Have we heard anything for that?
No.
No. We can follow up on that.
So could I have a motion to send a letter to Alberta Health Services saying thanks, but we need, think you need to try harder? Counselor Dwyer, all in favor? Carry. The rest, correspondence for information. Does somebody want to raise for information? Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carry. Thank you very much to everybody for attending our virtual livestreamed council meeting. We are now moving into a closed session. This ends our public session, so thank you for attending.